Looking at that.
Looking at that.
We do have warrants.
Well, let's approve the minutes of January 6th.
Let's approve the minutes, right? Remove and approve minutes for January 6th.
Surgery.
Any comments?
Says I wasn't here and then it was, it says I presented the financial statement.
Since you were present, right?
Yeah, January 6th.
It says Superintendent Barrett presented the financial as Patty Cavanaugh was absent.
No, you're looking at the month before.
Might be on December.
That's Wednesday, January 6th.
Okay.
There's a typo. In the first, in the, in the second paragraph, it says I was absent and then in the third paragraph, it says I gave you the financial statement.
There really is.
You weren't good.
See, I'm here. It says I was at, I was not there and then you say I'm here. So this needs to be eliminated.
Were you here?
I was here.
You were here.
I wasn't here in December because I was at the town.
I wonder if that was carried over.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right, we'll amend those minutes.
Great. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any statements on warrants?
Okay, so you have ten minutes to sign this evening in the amount of one fifty-eight, eight sixty-two-one. Sixty-seven thousand, five fifty-nine, eighty-eight is requisition number three for the sixty percent completion of the roof documents. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that you are signing that. You have the, the January report in front of you and there was really nothing that I am concerned about. We're doing very well with our budget except one little category that Julie and I will talk about.
Sixty-seven, five eighty.
Sixty-seven, five, five-nine.
Five-nine.
Point eight-eight. And so that, the general fund, our town appropriation goes to page one through six. And then page seven is our school choice budget. Right now, it looks like we are not expending ten thousand, nine thirty-eight, ninety-five. So that will be left in the fund if it continues. Page eight is our circuit breaker fund, which this will be probably the last year that we have any circuit breaker funds because we have nobody out of district that would qualify for us to set off the circuit breaker. And then page nine is the total of all three funds. We are still working on getting our other funds on here, which is the tuition revolving account and the pre-K funds. And Steve Shepherd, our grand accountant, is working. He's got the structure set up. He just hasn't been able to catch up with the back-to-July activity. So hopefully for next month, we'll be able to see those.
Okay.
Okay? And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Well, what was the thing you wanted to flag with Janine? You could do that later?
Yeah, our textbooks are all respect a little bit, but we can, we'll find it somewhere else to make up for that, so. It's the new coding, so she may have charged the textbooks when I might have moved her money on her. So we need to look at my, where I classify things versus where she thinks they are in her.
I just like to buy textbooks.
Yeah. So we'll reconcile that.
As we move along with public comments? Comments in the public? Not yet, not yet. Unfinished business. We have, under unfinished business, we have a discussion items update on the roof project?
Yeah, I think a couple of things have happened and I'm going to go to Patty for the financials on it, but since we last met, we have met with the finance committee. We had a special town meeting. Was that on the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. And the town did vote to continue the roof project. We have a debt exclusion vote on March 1st. That would be an important time. I'd actually like to talk to PTO, encourage families to come out to vote in favor of that. So.
Julie's here.
Is that a public vote or?
Pardon?
That's a public vote or?
That is the vote, the town vote.
Yes, the town vote.
Yeah.
So on March 1st is your primary for the presidential election and on that ballot will also be a question if the town residents support a debt exclusion for the roof project funding.
Okay. Which is kind of like a two-way override?
Basically.
That's what it essentially is.
Essentially, okay.
But it, it will be important to get people out to do that.
Okay.
Because we need the funding in order to continue the project.
Right.
What's happening thus far are all the plans and the architectural drawings and the consultants, but the actual construction of the project and overseeing of the project needs this funding.
Right. At the special town meeting, there was a question, like a couple of days later, the program was going to kind of like approve or not approve or?
And they did.
And they approved, okay, great.
Yes, they did.
That sounds good.
I don't know if you want to say anything about the finances.
Sure, so we have, we have an approved budget, an approved budget, project scope and budget from MSBA that totals about two point nine million dollars. So what happens now is because at the special town meeting, we made the project approval contingent on the March 1st vote. If we stop work, we're not going to make our deadlines to have construction done this summer. So what the finance board and the select board did was that they appropriated, we're, to get us to March 11th, March 11th is the date where we need to have a hundred percent of our documents, construction documents done and into MSBA so they can have their commissioning agent look them over. It's like a double check. If we don't make that deadline, we're not going to get out in the market to bid on time. So we've paid through sixty percent docs and we are, the money they originally appropriated to us, two hundred and ten thousand, to get to the hundred percent, we're thirty-eight-hundred, thirty-eight-hundred and seventy-five dollars shy. So the finance committee did approve that last night and put that money into our roof account so we can get to the March 11th date. And then the second milestone is April 27th. And the April 27th is important because if the debt exclusion doesn't pass on March 1st, we'll have to address this again at town meeting.
Okay.
Okay? So to get us to March 27th, that would be, the bidding phase would have had to have started, that we get our documents all ready for bid and out to bid so we can get out to market as quickly as possible. So that is an additional eleven thousand, five hundred dollars or six hundred dollars. So what the finance committee said was, let's go get you to March 11th, make your deadlines. We'll know on March 1st and then we'll decide after that, depending on what happens, how to get to April 27th. So that's where we are right now. But everything's progressing. I think it's a good plan. It's a, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a good budget and we really want to keep going so that the construct, so we don't have to delay construction until next summer.
It's a lot of juggling.
It is.
Yeah.
It's a very, you know, it's, it's a called accelerated for a reason.
Right. Julie, you had a comment?
This is the question, two point nine million is your total for the roof project?
Yes.
And then the grant from elsewhere was some big portion of that, right?
Fifty-two point oh-six percent of eligible costs will be refunded by, will be given to us in a grant from the MSBA. But we already know that there's some costs that won't be eligible because we are changing out the, the condensers, compressors and condensers because they're at the end of their life. So there's no sense of putting them back on. They're screwing holes in the roof, taking them off when they die and screwing more holes. And so the select board agreed with us that it was, it was time to replace those. So those are the town's only costs because, and they also won't, if we want to, if we want to roof the garage, they won't do that either, so. So the town knows that those are one hundred percent of their costs.
So I guess we turn it back to Ken?
Yeah, take it over to Ken. So I was at, up to the roof.
Okay. Moving very long.
Yes.
So, any other questions on the roofing project? I guess not. Further discussion on proposed FY seventeen budget?
Patty did an update for you. So this is draft number two. And even though she walked you through the summary of changes last time on the first page, I think would be a good idea to review those. And then if you have any questions on particular individual line items, we can, we can take those. So I'm going to pass it back to you, Patty.
Okay, so when we originally looked at our budget last month, we had an increase of three point six seven, six-five percent. After doing a couple of redos, we're now at three point eight-seven percent. So I'm pretty confident that these are solid numbers. The one thing that's still outstanding, I am waiting from our technology director. He was still getting some information on some of our, our softwares that we use, trying to get new pricing for those. So that may change this budget a little. But the main thing that has changed from the last budget is that last year, we had proposed adding a instructional technology integration specialist into our technology staff. And because we had no data, we split it evenly between the four elementary schools and the high school and the regional. So everybody had twenty percent. After going through almost one year of having Maureen with us, some of the schools feel that the even allocation was not justified. So I sat down with Scott Paul and we decided that the most fair way to allocate her time is by number of teachers in each school because that's who she's serving. So that added seven thousand, seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars to our budget here in Deerfield.
It's not an increase of her salary, it's just an increase. It reflects the, the amount of time that she spends.
So that's basically the, the biggest thing that's changed. If, but if you want, I can step us through the whole thing. Would you like me to go through the whole thing again?
I think for the benefit of those in the audience that didn't hear us last month.
Sure, and I have copies here. I have extra copies here. If anybody would like one, or don't, she can.
Share. Share and share alike.
Okay, so we're on page two of thirteen and I hope, you know, I've had, I've been criticized before about not having page numbers and correct dates and draft numbers, so I've really spent a lot of time making sure that I'm dotting my i's and crossing my t's here. So the first of our salary related in costs is that we have, even though we don't have a negotiated percentage for the contract, we do have to give steps and that's going to add fifty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars to our budget. We have some teachers who have applied for degree changes. That'll increase the budget, four thousand, two hundred and ninety-five. We've had some IAs and teachers apply for longevity or earn longevity and that adds sixty-five hundred dollars to the budget. The increase in health, retirement and other, this is the change for the health insurance for the central office, retirement for teachers who are retiring this year and, and any other contract changes, be them union or non-union, and that's going to add seventy-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars to our budget.
And that includes the retirement buybacks?
Yes. We do have a teacher returning from a leave of absence that's going to add fifty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars back to our budget. We knew this last year. We made the decision to remove the full salary and so we have to put it back now because they will be returning. And then we had an increase in one instructional assistant for twenty-two thousand, seven twenty-seven. This was someone who was hired in fifteen but after the budget process. So we have to add it this year because it's a change since we did the budget. The allocation for the instructional technologist is seventy-seven, eighty-three. We are proposing to increase our sub-rate from sixty-five dollars a day to seventy-five dollars a day in order to be more competitive with our area schools and sixty-five dollars a day doesn't cut it and we're teetering on being below minimum wage. So that would add six thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. We do have one reduction in staffing and that is through attrition. We are forecasting, and I think somebody has data later, but we, next year, we will still have two first grades for our two kindergartens and I think our enrollment right now is just justifying two kindergarten teachers. So we would be losing, we wouldn't replace the teacher who was retiring. So that would reduce the budget. And that totals one fifty-seven, five ninety-seven. Now, we do have some increases in our central office expenses, sixty-eight hundred and five, that is Deerfield share. We lost some grant funding for about three positions, so we had to put them back into the central office budget and Waitley's, uh, Waitley, sorry, Deerfield share is sixty-eight oh-five. We have an increase in instructional equipment of eighty-nine hundred dollars. And for the life of me, I can't think of what that was.
The Rizzo.
Oh, it's, no, it's our leases. It's, we've started leasing computers. So we have to add the lease payment in. Instructional services increases sixteen thousand dollars and this is for children who are in need of services in the building, additional services. Our medical and health services increased a thousand dollars and that is our, our AEDs, we have them in the buildings, but we never budgeted for replacing the batteries and the pads and the EpiPens are going up, so we're increasing the budget by a thousand dollars. Increase in technology, twenty-one thousand, ninety-two dollars. The building security systems, eleven thousand dollars. That's something that we've been paying out of our repairs and maintenance and we now want to put it in our budget because those, that's our fire alarm and everything else, fire extinguishers that have to be serviced. Other expenses, twenty-six, ninety-two and an increase in custodial supplies of four thousand. We are under budget every year and the cost of the paper is really going up. I do have Mr. Lesko, district wide, trying to see what it would cost us. It, it would be initial capital outlay, but to put hand dryers and, and try to get rid of at least the paper towels.
Do we, do we work with the collaborative about book buying?
Yes, we do. We're, we're actually not with the colla, we don't do the collaborative with that. We're going through MHEC. They have better pricing.
Okay.
So we, we are doing that, but it's still, you know, like I said, going to hand dryers in the bathrooms would probably be more efficient, but there would be an initial capital outlay to do that. But then we would, we would get savings because then we'd only have to, you know, buy the toilet paper.
Right.
We do have some decreases. Our, our legal expense will go down twenty-three, twenty, and this is adjusting to what we've been paying. The total central office percentage went down for Deerfield from thirty point six-one to twenty-eight point seven-two. Decrease in professional development stipends, this is adjusting to the number of teachers that are in the building. And we have a decrease in the maintenance of equipment of five thousand dollars. That is the difference of the old copier leases with the new copier leases. We save some money. And we have a decrease in out-of-district tuitions of thirty-eight thousand and that is because one of our students is moving up to seventh grade, so they become frontier budget. So that totals one sixty-eight, seven sixty, or a three point eight-seven percent increase. If you look on pages three of thirteen through eleven of thirteen, that's your detail and we're looking at the FY fifteen actual to the FY sixteen budget to the proposed. And that's where the changes come in detail to what I've summarized on the front page. Page twelve, I have had a chance to look at our school choice. And these again are just projections as of December. We got an update from Desi in December. So we're looking at, we should be closing this school year with about thirty-five thousand dollars still in our school choice. Our projected revenue is six hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. So that would give us six hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven forty-one. We would still support the arts partnership with the school choice money for five thousand dollars. And staffing would increase by the two expenses that we have been paying out of circuit breaker. We need to bring them over here to school choice, which is a part, part of a teacher and some services to keep a child in district. And that would be five hundred and seventy-four thousand, three thirty, and we would have a projected balance and that should say of two, at two thousand and seventeen, I'm sorry, of about seventy-five thousand, four eleven, which I think is a good little cushion because we have been having kids coming in needier at the pre-K level. We've had kids move in that have needs and if we have anybody that we can no longer sustain in the school and we're looking at an out-of-district tuition or a placement in another program in another school in the union, that would give us a little cushion there for that. Yes, David?
School choice revenue seems high. Not to be a downer, but, but to take money away, but that, is it still like five thousand a child?
Except for the special, like different children.
And you got to look at the sped increment.
And how mu, is that a lot?
It is a lot. It is a lot for Deerfield.
I thought those were usually in the five hundred, thousand.
We've got, we have, we currently have, I think, three students who's school choice here to Deerfield, but we had to tuition them out to special programs.
Yeah.
So we get that money back. So that's why I'm projecting it at six fourteen, five eleven.
Is that kind of some of that, that we wound up with extra last year towards the end where producing tables?
Right. So because what happened at the end of last year, and it did happen again this year, so I manually adjusted it, those students that belong to Deerfield as school choice were reported on the tuition-receiving schools, school choice. So ours looked low. And then when we corrected the situation, we got the money in June.
And you're planning for that.
Right. So now, because it happened again, but I've taken them off the other schools and added them to Deerfield.
Okay.
Because I know we'll end up with the money.
But we're laying out money as well, aren't we?
Yes, that's in our budget.
So you're laying out the money in here and taking it back in here.
Now, we could, you could, we could reverse that, David. I could, what I could do is take the amounts of tuition, put them here and put that amount of people back on our budget. We could do that too. It doesn't, you know.
Well, you're putting it here because that's kind of where it?
It, that's, I inherited it that way.
I see.
And I've never changed it out. But we could do that. We could take those tuitions off of our budget, put them in school choice and then take the people off school choice and put them in the budget for the same amount of money.
Well, it would probably make sense to eventually have people into the operating budget.
Yes.
As opposed to tuitions.
Absolutely. So we can do that. I can absolutely do that.
Do we know approximately what grade the tuitions are in?
Some of, I.
They're specials. They're not classroom teachers.
Yeah, they're not graded. I can tell you they're each groups. I don't, they're not.
Are they, are they with us for a number of years more?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's the question. But as long as it's, I mean, it's essentially a school choice expenditure because they're school choice students, why don't we work next year towards?
Matching incoming money with outgoing funds. It makes the most sense. So I will do that. And then the last page is just the, the breakdown of the percentages. I did forget to include that in our last packet. So that's just, those are based on the October 1st, two thousand and fifteen enrollments and this is the percentage breakdown.
So while we're shedding our share of the frontier budget, Deerfield share of the frontier budget is, I mean, is while we're shedding our share.
Of central office.
Of central office percentages, it's essentially shifting over to the frontier.
Frontier.
Frontier costs to the town. Just to point that out to the, to the people present that even though it's providing us with the savings, it's hitting, hitting Deerfield at the other end. Which is something the finance committee has to consider.
Right. And mainly, if you want to switch that for a second, it's because Deerfield's, on the five-year enrollment, Deerfield stayed exactly the same. They lost the same amount of kids that we added for the next year, but the other towns were very fluctuating. And two towns went down, one town went up and then someone's got to pick up the downs and unfortunately, it's Deerfield because of the percent, you know, because of the percentages. It's got to go somewhere when someone goes down and someone else has got to go up. So that's all I have to present unless anybody has questions.
Anyone at the table have a question? Anyone in the audience have questions?
Yes. I'm just wondering about the technology specialist, the increase for Deerfield, is that because she'll be servicing Deerfield more?
There's more, and that's the way we're looking at it, that there's more teachers in Deerfield than in any of the other schools. So technically, she is spending more time here. And I, I did not include in the allocation, I just put instructional staff. I didn't put in service staff such as speech O two, O G P T. So it's just instructional staff.
So are we thinking hours, like, or days would be more at Deerfield than the other?
Not, not really so much, but for instance, Conley was being charged the same, same amount as Deerfield and, and Waitley. And that's not fair. They only have one, they have six teachers.
So I was thinking of it, and I'm not sure if this is the right way to think about it, but in reverse, that we're a bigger school, so there's more people trying to vie for her time.
Correct.
That means we individually sort of get less of that. So I just wasn't sure if that increase in percentage would allow for her to be here more often.
Yeah, she didn't want to break it down because she, really, it goes more in projects. I mean, there are cycles of things, so she didn't want to say, I'm in Deerfield two days a week. Because in some weeks, she may be in Deerfield every single day. And that's the way she, you know, was trying to look at it. And we thought, well, in order to be equitable to everyone in the district, that we would break it down using that formula.
But in theory, since it brings you down that way.
In theory.
In, in theory, this person would be here more than the other elementary schools.
Yes, yes.
Over, over the course of a year.
But you have to remember too, David, and this is, you know, it's perception is, you know, at the twenty, at twenty, 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 they, people wanted her in the building, but people weren't using her, so she was planning her, just her union-wide projects and her union-wide PD because she still has to do that too. So she really wants to manage this as when I have appointments with this teacher and this teacher and this teacher, but she also needs her planning time when she's doing professional developments for all four union schools. So there may be time where she's in her office working on that rather than out in a school. And what was happening was because a school said, well, I'm supposed to have her for a day, she'd have to sit up there for a day and try to do her work out of her office. So we don't want to tough her that way either. So she's going to be like appointments and we'll go from there.
So could we just talk a little bit about moving forward? In the budgeting process, we move from the month of February, which is, this year is past number two and years gone by, it's been past number three, I think, on the budget. We move to the month of March where we conduct a public hearing at the start of our next school committee meeting to discuss the budget. We generally have finance committee members and select board in attendance at the start of the meeting for that hearing. Then they break off and move over, back over to town hall to continue their budget conversations over there. But there will be a full public hearing, we certainly encourage. Encourage you to get the word out and have, have parents show up, those that are interested in what the budget looks like. And at the end of that meeting, we typically will vote a budget number to submit to the finance committee. Our recommendation goes to the finance committee. They consider it and make a recommend, ultimately make a recommendation to the town and hopefully they, they'll recommend our, our budget amount. Most years, we always end up at that, that stage, but that is the process and then the whole thing is voted in the April town meeting, so.
So with that being said, Mr. Carterback, is there anything that the committee is looking for us to make any changes for the March meeting? Would you like to see us get that percentage down a little bit? Are you okay with this percentage?
Good questions.
I've pointed out to all the committees, unfortunate because we have no, we are not funding any new initiatives this year. not funding any new initiatives this year, other than the increase in the substitute salary line, um, that doesn't mean that we don't want to be innovative and, and promote things, but given the financial climate, um, we, we just don't feel that we can, our other goal is to, um, you know, I know Deerfield and Frontier in particular have gone through some difficult, um, changes because of finances and had to reduce staff in the last couple of years, so, um, our goal was to try to, to maintain that, because it is difficult for morale. I will also be honest with you and say we're keeping a very close eye on kindergarten registrations, um, I've been checking with the, um, secretaries, we have thirty-four who have registered, it ended on the twenty-ninth, um, who are Deerfield residents, we have an additional two students who are children of employees and an additional student who is a sibling of a student, so that brings us up to thirty-seven, we currently have thirty-eight students, um, and as we've talked about, our, um, our maximum that we think is ideal, and that's not exactly the right word, maximum for kindergarten that we talked about is, is twenty, so it doesn't give us a lot of wiggle room. Now, last year, the Secretary of Staff here did an amazing job tracking, and the number that we finally came up with was actually the number that enrolled, and then we had one.
In January.
Um, no, but it was later in the spring, before, um, before, certainly before school ended, and we had one student leave from the October report to now, so, um, so we're keeping a very close eye on that.
How, right, right?
Oh, just a question, how, how were the kindergarten teachers finding this year with the first year with just, have they had more students in their classrooms?
Oh, they have, I mean, they have, there's thirty-eight divided between the two classrooms.
Right.
Uh, I don't know the breakdown of that, is it nineteen and...
More needs here, how many do you have, Maureen?
Well, I just lost one, we had...
Yeah, you just lost one.
Yeah, we had thirty-nine and now we have thirty-eight, or...
Yeah.
How many's in your class?
In your classroom?
I have, I have, right now, I have nineteen.
Nineteen.
It's nineteen, nineteen.
So, so of course, it's more problematic and more difficult, you know?
And more, more and more kids are showing up with more needs.
And that is not a phenomenon with our district, it's not a phenomenon with the county, I think it's, it's a national phenomenon, and, um, yeah, it's something we keep talking about because, um, because it is a reality.
So just, just a curiosity question, or just a question, question, um, you mentioned thirty-five registered.
Thirty-four, yeah.
Thirty-four, I mean, two faculty and one sibling, um, and one school choice sibling.
Right, right.
So, we're not technically required to take the two faculty and one school choice sibling.
Oh, I think it's in, yeah, it's in our language, in our policy language around school choice.
That's what the question I have to ask is, um, so that would come in as a recommendation under school choice that three slots would be awarded in kindergarten?
Not necessarily.
Pardon?
What's that?
Not necessarily for school choice, are you counting the faculty and the sibling as school choice, is that what, yeah?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, because we have...
Yeah, no, I mean, you wouldn't, I would assume you wouldn't open any others, but...
Right, because we currently have four students in kindergarten who are school choice, who are in that same situation, either students, faculty, or siblings.
Right, but when we had the school choice conversation last year, we talked about the fact that there were potential siblings that might not, we might not have space for, that's why I was asking if siblings of school choice are automatically awarded a space or if they automatically get a space if school choice is voted.
Well, it's if the sibling is currently in the school, then we tend to accept them, I, here's an example, I had a pair contact me and their sibling had graduated and they, we're assuming that their younger child could come into the school, and I explained that that's, that the sibling had to actually be enrolled for the incoming kindergartner to come, so that's just been the practice.
Right, it certainly has been our past practice, and it certainly was not our intent to break up families and...
I'm, I'm not out to break up families, I'm asking...
And that sounded dramatic, but, no.
I'm asking, no, I meant, I, I understand, but, but we had the whole conversation last year as we...
I know, I know.
As we went through the agonizing process.
Right.
Um, and, um, I just want to be clear heading forward of what, what we want as a committee and what we want as an administration, so that would, that policy would continue.
Okay.
I mean, that's what the numbers you've given us say.
Right.
So we have thirty-seven seats out of forty filled already.
Right.
It'll be an interesting summer.
It will be.
So, any other questions or...
Well, I have a question about the number, um, you know, I've had twenty students up until, um, recently, and, um, luckily, I had a really, I have a really great class and it's, it's been okay, in the past, I've had classes that have been difficult, um, so how, how large will a cla, will a class get? Now, you're saying you're allowing these, um, you know, faculty members' children to come, and then if we have more people move in, how, how high can that number get?
Well, the, the stated, you know, the stated goal would be twenty in a classroom max in kindergarten, I believe, kindergarten and first, and then slightly higher numbers once you move beyond first to some of the other grades.
If the number retired to twenty, what happens? Do we get another classroom?
It will be an interesting conversation, yeah, the odds are good, the administration might come in with a recommendation for a third class.
As we know now, we have some, um, issues coming up for next year, so, um, if the number is twenty and we have some, um, you know, difficult, um, situations, we're gonna need a lot of support in our classrooms to make it work.
Even at twenty.
Would we have room for a third kindergarten with the three pre-Ks we have now? Physi, I'm just asking physically, I'm not saying it's a...
Well, if you really think about it, then that, you would end up splitting up the kindergarten and if you had a third, it'd probably be in the first grade wing, because you would have two sections of first, but if you're looking at numbers that might go over twenty, wouldn't necessarily equate to adding another section, but it could be looking at what additional staffing are you providing to support those two rooms that you have, so there are a couple of different solutions, a couple of different discussions that we could have.
Can I answer the, as best we can, does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I'll wait till it continues and see what happens.
Yes.
Have you seen any benefits from the early release as far as the less cost of the substitute teachers?
As less what?
They're asking, less cost.
Less cost in substitute teachers this year with the early release.
Yeah, we, we had a, a joint school committee meeting last Thursday, and I'm gonna forget that total, but I believe it was a reduction just in two months comparing October last year to October this year to November, fourteen and fifteen, I think it was about eight thousand dollars in those two months in some, for the district, in substitute costs, yeah, so I didn't play it out the whole month, you know, September, we just were getting started and with the holidays at, at Christmas, it didn't feel like a quick comparison, so, yeah.
Ten thousand?
A thousand.
Yeah, ten thousand.
Ten thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we had, uh, as Marty just said, there was a joint meeting and there was a presentation given on the, um, early release time and professional development efforts this year, which was encouraging, but there was also feedback from components that there, it does cause stress in the fa, you know, in the family lives that, of our, of our parents and of the students, and that there were some questions on equity on the, um, instructional assistance side and how they're able to get access to things in, in some towns and not in others, so it's all being looked at, I guess, it's an ongoing, ongoing discussion, but so far, things have looked very good, the cost savings that was presented is being realized, the professional development has definitely improved, so.
Yeah, that's, that's second to nothing. There was also positive family feedback.
And it was very positive, yes, I mean, it's not just, I'm not, yeah, true, I'm sorry, so. Anything else? No votes required? Reports? I mean, I moved quickly, I'm assuming we had no instructions to the, the administration on the budget?
Well, why don't you take us through one more time, so at the next meeting, we're going to have, uh, when's the public meeting, next one?
It's the next meeting.
It's the next one.
It's the March meeting, so if we wanted to see alternatives to get to a percentage target, now would be the time to ask, just to see what, what might need to be done to get there.
I will say that we have not been invited by the Finance Committee yet, um, some of the towns, we already have scheduled meetings, um, but Deerfield is not one that has invited us prior to the public hearing, that doesn't mean that they won't, but we haven't received any.
We're supposed to make our own appointment with them.
Well...
That seems to be they've been going anyway.
Some discussion as to what the process is.
Uh, so I, I really don't have an indication from the town of any specific concerns about a particular dollar amount.
Has the town got any of this yet?
Not before you get it first.
We did, after, after the first meeting, I did, I did send it to Doug Finn as you requested, and also to Janine in case any of the teachers wanted it, so they all had electronic versions of that, of the document.
So they kind of have an idea where we're at.
And, I mean, as you, as you look at a budget that's increasing a hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars roughly, um, approximately, well, basically, the hundred and sixty-eight can be largely found in the, the fixed salary and benefits arena, which is what, where we get hit every year, um, so three point six one percent of the three point eight seven percent increase is accounted for in salary benefits.
Yeah, the other pieces, we don't have a negotiated contract yet, so there's potentially fluctuation one way or another on that, um, we may by the time we get to a public hearing, so this could look a little different, so be aware of that. No, I don't think so.
I think so.
Hmm?
So I think so, um, anyway, I was gonna say, um, I, I think you always very conscientiously prepare a budget with town finances in mind on the other side and balancing that with what we need, uh, no new initiatives, uh, anything like that to really make a decision about, so I, I wouldn't be interested in cutting, you know, cutting our own budget before a public hearing.
Yeah, because, I mean, it always comes down to staff and that stuff.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to do that, um, you know.
So, okay, so now we can move on to...
Yes.
Reports.
Reports.
I assume everyone gets your summary, Carter?
I think so, I was just gonna hit on a, a couple of quick things with the, um, with the collaborative.
Sure.
There's another meeting with Stan Rosenberg about school choice, uh, charter schools and the effect they're having on our districts, um, there's another meeting in Amherst Friday at four, Bayne Center, um, so I'll attend that, I did attend a, a home meeting with, um, people from the collaborative, other superintendents at a, a gentleman's house in Greenfield about two weeks ago to find out the lay of the land on, um, legislation that's, um, the governor wants to raise the cap on charter schools, um, we're, in our area, it affects us a lot, um, the amount of money that goes out, we don't have much say about what happens there, um, and how it affects our school budget, um, so the governor wants to raise the cap, um, the legislature has held them back for a while, but this, I don't think they're gonna be able to again, um, and so we, I guess, from the, the point that Stan Rosenberg is taking is that if it's going to raise or may raise, um, we should get concessions that we've wanted for twenty years, or people have wanted, um, finance oversight, all of that for charter schools, and so he's gonna go into some negotiation with the Senate to try and come up with a bill, um, that could have some impact, and, otherwise, um, the pro side has said they're gonna take it to a, you know, a ballot initiative in November, and if that passes, there'll be no control, there'll be no, there's really gonna be no cap, um, and he said the legislature does not go back and revisit an issue if the, if it passes by ballot, so we would have no control over anything and there would be no cap virtually, so he, it's a high stakes gamble both ways, uh, but he felt like, um, the more information he could get from school committee members, people that are interested in the community, um, to funnel short, um, concise information to him so he can have his talking points and his issues to deal with when he's in these negotiations, very helpful, so the collaborative, um, has put together a Google Doc to be able to load all that information in one spot so that we can funnel it to him, so that's generally, that was a big part of what's going on at the collaborative and, and how they help our districts, so they're kind of, they're not pro or con either way, they just want to get the facts out and give people a way to address it, so.
I appreciate that, and, and I'd just like to dovetail a little, um, with that, the Superintendents Association also, um, have been working hard to try to influence the fact that it, it does affect our rural districts so differently than the urban districts, and that, not that we're opposed to charter schools, but the funding formula, the current funding formula, um, is supposed to be that when a child leaves your school to go to a charter school, you get a hundred percent reimbursement for that first year, and then twenty-five percent reimbursement for the next five years, Baker's choosing or proposing that we do a different money formula, and it's only over three years, problem is the state has not had the money to even fund what they initially promised, so we have not been getting, um, our full reimbursement, just like we haven't been getting our full reimbursement for transportation.
Correct.
And there seems to be, it's very frustrating because there seems to be no recourse, I mean, people throw up their hands and say, well, you're supposed to get a hundred percent reimbursement for regional transportation, oh, well, we can only do sixty.
Right.
So, it's the best we can do, same thing's happening with charter, so I am very concerned that if the cap is lifted, which I agree, it's been held off for months now, um, but I have a feeling there's too much pressure in Boston on that it's going to be lifted and it's going to be once again not fully funded.
Right.
Um, and once again, the rural districts are going to lose, so I appreciate all the effort that you have put forward with that.
And I can add to that, that we just got our charter numbers again in December, so the town of Deerfield has nineteen students in charter placements, three of them at the K to six level and sixteen of them at the seven twelve level, and they're going to Four Rivers, the Pioneer Valley Performing Arts and Chinese Immersion.
And it's a huge dollar amount that outlays, so one example that a principal from, um, the Gilmanigew School said, they're very small, they have one class per grade level, they had five students leave, and that was, um, they have nowhere else to cut, as we all don't, um, they had to cut the reading specialist, um, and so, by, the intervention is, so by cutting that, now you have this rise of more students that didn't, you know, so now there's a need for more services which costs them more money, so they get hit on both ends and it's, it's, um...
So right now, at the elementary level, we are paying forty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for three students, so that's about thirteen, that is thirteen thousand nine ninety-six per student.
Yeah.
And at the, um, K to, the seven through twelve level, we are paying six hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars for thirty-six students, that rounds out, because every school's different, but that comes out to about eighteen thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars per student that are choicing out.
It's a huge amount.
And the charter schools who sets their own budget, they determine their own budget and then they build the school systems and say, okay... and then they build the school systems and say, okay, that's eighteen thousand for this year. Next year, it could be twenty.
Right.
And they charge us a facility fee.
Right.
Facilities, yeah.
You push some hot buttons there, Trevor, you got it.
I know, I'm sorry, but it's frustrating to us, so.
It is frustrating.
And with no, you know, they're not under a local control, so we have no control.
One of the things that, yeah, that had come out of the meetings is that the finance committees from each of the towns should invite charter school administration to attend each of the town meetings, just the way we have to attend.
Yes.
And the tech school people have to attend and defend their own budget.
Yes.
We should give away the money and say, see you later, and there's no checking balance on it.
Correct.
I'd at least like them to stand before the townspeople and tell people, what are you doing? This is, this is how many students I have. This is, you know.
Yep.
So.
Sorry to.
Sorry, sorry.
And I, I think the point here is that choice is good.
Yes.
But let's fund it equitably.
Right.
Is there any discussion, urban rural thing about just targeting raising the cap for urban only schools?
Yes, yes, there has been. Like, they were talking like, there's six thousand, like, six thousand students, you can only have, you know, so two or three charter schools. So if you have a city with like Springfield with a lot of students, you can certainly support more, but in our neck of the woods, if there's a, you know, I'm not sure what the number was, but they were hoping to kind of fit that into legislation too, so that, you know, if this cap's gonna raise, then we're gonna get some of this oversight and help that, I mean, the long shot, all of it. But there's a lot of areas to be addressed, for sure, I think that.
So that's what's happening there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Principles required.
Okay. We have three things that we'd like to share with you. The first is social media education.
I think it just sounds so awful.
Trying, trying to like, it's painful.
It is.
No, recently, we've noticed an increase in the use of social media sites among our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. And there were a couple of incidents that came up recently. And what's happening is that we're having students that are using sites like Instagram and Facebook and Snapchat. You actually have to be thirteen years old to access those sites. So what they're doing, admittedly, is falsifying their birthday. How many of you have entered a fake birthday? So, anyway, so we're really trying, we had sent a communication home to parents to really alert them of the dangers of internet use. And we're trying to teach students about ethical internet use and online safety. So one of the things that we've done this week, we've had the Deerfield Police Department come in and they've done presentations in fourth grade separately, they did fifth grade, that was yesterday, and they're doing sixth grade on Friday. So I don't think that's going to be the end of those conversations. I know teachers are having conversations as well. And I'm looking for other outside organizations and maybe even some younger teenagers or somebody to come in and talk about internet safety and online safety. It's something, it's kind of scary. When you look at your digital footprint and those things are never deleted from the internet. And we have students that are putting things up that are inappropriate, they'll regret later in life, all of that. And, and we also learned that some students are actually communicating with folks that they don't even know personally. So we're trying to do our best to keep everybody safe.
Yeah, I went to that presentation yesterday. I thought Chief Petrich did a very good job. I, I was most surprised at, well, how much more they know about social media than I did. I was feeling quite stupid and ignorant about it. And how many admitted to falsifying their birthdays in order to gain access to things. And how many frankly didn't seem to have many parental controls watching what they were doing and the conversations that the boys were having while gaming with people that they didn't know who they were from all over the world. But I thought he did a nice job of balancing, giving tools to make good decisions without trying to be totally fearful. But, you know, at the same point, impress upon the kids how serious this could be.
He adjusted his presentation a little bit to the fifth grade students, which I had requested that he do that because that was kind of where things started and we were learning the students were using these applications inappropriately. And some students actually had multiple accounts. Parents didn't have any idea. Some parents were aware, so. But many of the parents that we had spoken to afterwards actually ended up closing those accounts. Will they try to open them again? But it goes back to parental supervision.
Now, in terms of security on school grounds, what, what do they have access to in terms of, to the internet and?
Not, they don't. We, I mean, we have, we have those things blocked, so.
So this is taking place in?
And I'm not a, I'm not a social media user, so I, I wouldn't even know.
Sites are blocked and the bandwidth that's available to students is limited for that reason.
Okay.
We have, we do monitor it, so when the students are in the computer lab, there's two staff members in there. And in theory, the kids are supposed to be doing what is order of the day, which might be research for a project or something like that. And then when the Chromebooks or the laptops are in the classroom, the teacher has them doing what they're supposed to be doing. But, you know, one of the things we learned is, Marty, you said, you know, that, that you were surprised how, how much they knew, but there's a lot they don't know. They don't know basics of security settings and privacy settings and that if you post something on a public account, it's there forever and anybody can see it and things like that. We found parents confuse ease of keyboarding with skillful, responsible use. In other words, they think, oh, the kid's typing away there, they're, they're all good. No, you know? So it's, it's an ongoing thing that we're gonna continue to address. When the, when the district had the US states, the district attorney's office.
Right, in the fall.
Yes, that was, that was eye opening.
It was eye opening.
I think, anything we can do to do more and more of that, because that is the future in these, the accounts that, what I learned there and the apps that the kids are using and the codes they're using, you know, P I R, parent in the room, all these text codes. It was mind blowing. And I'm pretty tech savvy, but I, it was way over my head.
I think it really should be something on an annual basis. And the technology, I have to say, it changes so quickly that just,
Within six months.
When you try to get caught up, it's gone beyond that.
Right. And, and Facebook is like the parents thing. It's, it's now Kick or all these other things.
The kids got off it because the parents found it. That's what I'm told.
Exactly. And then in the, yes, if we could, you know, if we could educate.
So now we need to invade Instagram and Twitter and then get off that too.
And then they'll come up with something else.
With something else. So anyway, we can educate the parents too, because like you said, it's back in the day when, you know, your parents didn't know how to change the clock on the VCR. It's, that's kind of where we're at with this stuff. So if any, any way we can, we can educate us to do that stuff and to help and watch, it'd be great.
Well, who still has a VCR?
Just one last thing. I just, I just wonder if it makes any sense to reach out to the Frontier faculty who are doing some of the health classes, just to, I mean, I think it's great that the police do that and that presentation role model, but I do sometimes think that maybe, I wonder if some of that's over the top. And also just see, just see what they're doing for help, maybe bring some of them in to do sort of from an educated perspective.
You know, the purpose of us bringing in the Deerfield Police really was, I, I wanted to have a law enforcement component there because some of what was brought to our attention really was cyberbullying.
Sure, no, yeah, and I'm not saying.
I wanted that piece in there.
I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I just meant it's a different kind of, for some kids anyway, maybe a different way of hearing it. Because I know they're doing some stuff at Frontier. It's part of their, it seems like my kids have helped every semester. I don't know if that's true.
We are, we're, health is important.
Is it? Okay, on and on and on. So, but there's, so there's people who are definitely.
Certainly, we appreciate.
Yes.
It's not the end of the discussion.
What you're doing.
And actually, Sarah Mitchell had mentioned that perhaps Kate Blair or Heather Bonn might be wanting to do something with the elementary schools, just because so much seems to be filtering down so quickly.
Yeah, the fact that you put fourth grade in here now as well, games opposed to the usual culprits. What's happening in fifth grade? Those fifth grade teachers are kind of lax. Just kidding. I get it.
Want to do the last one?
Transformation year.
So, are we ready for the next item?
Yes.
Absolutely. So, too bad Julie, too bad Julie left because she's a big driver. The Math and Science Festival is Friday, February twelfth. It's a huge event. It's, it comes from our PTA. We have presenters come, they meet with students in whole class and small groups. There's all different kinds of activities that are related to science and math. Kids love it. It's all day. We invite you to come and join us if you can. How many, you've been there, yeah?
I've been there, yeah. And we have parents present to the, to the class. Yeah, it's exciting. It's really exciting.
And then the last thing I just wanted to talk about was, we have a trainer coming in. His name is Mike Anderson. He actually lives locally. He's a national presenter. He comes out of the Committee for Children, who really was integral in bringing responsive classroom practices to schools. And he's going to be presenting and working with our staff on differentiation for the next three to four weeks, about four weeks. This kind of came out of an audit that we had in the district last year where we were, it was brought to our attention, we needed a little more focus on differentiation across all of the elementary buildings. So he came highly recommended. I contacted him. He's coming, starting, his first session will be Friday and he will spend three days, three full days with staff. So the morning, he will do small group sessions with two grade levels at a time, related to service providers, special area staff, tailored to their needs. And then in the afternoon, during the early release time, it'll be a whole group session. The first session will just be talking about having a common language, understanding what differentiation is, what are some of the challenges, some of the successes.
What is differentiation?
Differentiation is looking at your instructional practices because you have students that are all across the learning continuum. So you're looking at how are you adjusting your instruction to meet their different needs, whether it's bright students or at-risk students. So trying to figure out a way that you can teach the same content and the same objective, but looking at the students, where they are in their skill sets, to be able to move them forward. So he's coming on February fifth, February twenty-sixth, and March eleventh for three full days. And then we have a faculty meeting next Thursday on the eleventh. He's actually gonna work and provide some things. He won't be there, but things that we can do to continue the conversations. And what will happen on the twenty-sixth and the March eleventh will really be driven by conversations that come out of the staff's small group sessions so they can kind of drive what some of those objectives will be moving forward. So I'm excited.
Yeah.
So I think it's gonna be great. And that's all we have.
Do we call the newspaper for Math and Science Festival Day?
They usually, they do come, yeah, they usually come, yeah.
Oh, my poor pathetic handwritten report. I've given, I've given most of it because the first item was about an update on the kindergarten. The second was about the charter school and where we were with the, the governor. And the only other thing I wanted to give you an update was the superintendent search. There were a total of twenty applicants. It was decided to bring ten forward for interviews, two withdrew. So that brings us to eight. They had three interviews on Monday night, three interviews last night, none tonight, and then two tomorrow, correct? So I don't know if you want to say anymore.
I don't know how much I can say. I'm getting yelled at by various.
Well, what you could say is the site visits.
That sums it up very, very nicely. The two didn't withdraw because of anything wrong with Frontier. They had, they positions, I think, were offered and accepted. But it's a very interesting process, yes. You have some people from out of state, in-state, nearby, not so nearby.
So your next task will be do site visits?
So we're gonna, tomorrow night, we will probably narrow, try to narrow it down to, I think we're doing three to five, or hopefully on the lower end, to put forward to a full committee. I think we tell the joint school committees next week sometime on the ninth.
Next Tuesday.
In my view, we have a joint meeting at?
We have a six o'clock joint meeting for the sole purpose of giving the names of the finalists.
Are you doing the site visits before the school committee?
No, no.
No.
After.
Before the final.
Okay.
On the twenty-ninth.
Right. And then on March tenth, you go be, be full school committee.
By March tenth.
By March tenth, the full school committee. And then the decision's made that night, I believe.
Personally, I'd like to thank David for taking on this search process. It's, it's not easy. It's a lot of time, so.
Thank you too.
And Denise, who's trying to keep her eyes open too.
Get us a good one.
We, we are overusing some of our committee members this year. I have people serving on negotiations, policy, and search committee. I don't know when the last time they saw their families were, so.
Well, this is all your fault.
Probably about the same.
So I have to get something nice for everybody, I guess.
It's probably about the same time you see your family.
Right.
Well, that's true. That's true, but that comes with my job. You guys are doing good deeds for good people.
Yes, thank you, Janine. Thank you both.
My pleasure.
My apologies for overlooking you and I. That's, so. There's no executive.
Denise is also on the superintendent's committee.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, no, they, she was pointed out.
Snooze it over.
Even though she is a fifth grade teacher. So. We have no executive session, so we're up to the last item on the agenda, which is adjourned.
Motion adjourned. Yep, second.
Maybe been seconded. Does anyone have a long, wanna have a long discussion or shall we just vote? All in favor?
All in favor.